Okay, gonna call this meeting to order, this special meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, May the twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Notice that this meeting probably was posted on May the seventeen. We have seventeen items, I think it is, on the agenda today. Oh, nineteen. And they're, and they're all Mr. Hayes's. This is our final day with him. So, I sent for a roll call, Mr. Town.
President.
The sellers.
Present.
Mr. Thompson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Hayes. Happy you have a good weekend?
Uh, yeah, it was just pretty good.
Pretty good?
Uh, mild but everything so.
I'm sorry. But did the weather pass you by?
Yeah, we didn't get the weather in Dallas. We get the weather down here, so it gets from late to night.
Okay. Okay, we, we have nineteen items today. So, did you, can you agree on any of them before we start plowing through the agenda?
Oh, yeah, we did have nineteen. I'm going to agree on about six of them.
Okay.
Okay, starting with the first one, two, two, nine, I agree with that. Ninety-one, ten.
Okay, item, uh, first one on the agenda, two, two, nine, thirty-eight, twenty-nine, Oak Cliff Drive, Dale City. R fifteen seventeen ninety-one, one hundred and ten. Assessor has it on for a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Can you agree with that, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to move on agenda item number one, B O E two, two, nine. Set the fair market value of the property at a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one?
Uh, seventeen oh five, four, four, two.
It's number three. It's, it's number three on the agenda.
Three?
Yeah. B O E number four, forty-two.
Oh, four, four, two, okay. Ten twelve South Locust, R one five five six five seventeen oh five. Assessor has it on for a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. You agree with that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on B O E four, forty-two, item number three on the agenda, to set the fair market value at a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one?
The next one, I don't have anything on, four twenty-seven, zero, three, four, five. The next one is, uh, nineteen seventy-five, four thirty-six.
Well, you're not doing four twenty-seven.
I don't have anything for it. You just have to read it out.
Okay.
Put it all over the place. That's the only one I have anything on.
Okay, so four thirty-six then is the next one you're agreeing to.
Yeah.
Number fifteen on the agenda.
Number what?
Fifteen on the agenda.
Fourteen oh four Northeast Forty-Fifth, R one sixteen fifty-six nineteen seventy-five. You're agreeing to a hundred and four thousand five hundred, correct?
Yeah.
I'd like to move on agenda item, uh, number fifteen, B O E four thirty-six. Set the fair market value of this property, be set at a hundred and four thousand five hundred.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one?
Next one is four thirty-nine, five two seventy-five.
Okay. That's which one?
Item eighteen.
Fifteen twenty, northeast twenty-seven? Hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
It's twenty-three. It's item number what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
I don't have it. So, I read it, number eighteen is fifteen twenty, northeast twenty-seventh Street. R zero seven zero twenty-five fifty-three seventy-five. What does the assessor have this on for?
A hundred and thirty thousand.
Can you agree to that, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on B O E four thirty-nine, item number eighteen on the agenda, to set the fair market value at a hundred and thirty thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any more, Mr. Hayes?
And the last one, nine zero five five four four two.
Okay, twenty-eight oh nine Northeast Eighteenth. R oh eight nine seventy-four ninety eighty-five, for a hundred and twenty-six thousand, right?
Yeah.
I move on agenda item nineteen, B O E four forty, that we set the fair market value of this property at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars per agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, going backwards. Item two on the agenda, sixty-four thirteen Northwest Hundred and Fifty-Eight. R twenty-one zero sixty-four ten forty. Your stated value is three hundred and twenty-eight. You staying with that, Mr. Hayes?
No, we're in rule sixty-five.
Okay, which, what is the, what is the number on, on the?
Four, four, one.
Eighteen oh five Peachtree, R fourteen sixty-two seventy six ninety eighty-nine thousand dollars? Your paperwork says sixty-five eight, Mr. Hayes, what are you going with?
Well, I couldn't find anything, but one thing I noticed that I wanted to discuss is the square footage was different than what we had. What do you got?
It's gotta be a small house, 'cause I know that neighborhood.
Eight hundred and thirty-three square feet?
How much?
Eight hundred and thirty-three square feet.
I have it at six hundred five hundred eighty-eight square feet. But I didn't really.
Is that a converted garage? It's a converted, it's a converted garage, Mr. Hayes. It must have been made permanent to the point that it increased the square footage.
Okay, well, I guess I have to agree with that, because I could, when I looked at that.
Should I have a motion for eighty-nine thousand dollars?
I'll make a motion on B O E four forty-one, item number two on the agenda, to set the fair market value at eighty-nine thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. I did this so wrong. The next item on the agenda is four, four, three. Four on the agenda, eight oh nine Woodland Way. R fourteen eighteen fifteen thirty. Your paperwork says a hundred and three five. Are you staying with that, Mr. Hayes?
No, um. This one must have fell off. One thing.
Fifteen thirty.
Yeah, I think this one fell off my. I have them all listed, and they're all fifteen thirty. Elmar looked, it tends to tend to fall off. I have no idea. I'm at one thirty seven five.
Okay.
Um, based on the, uh, the evidence you got. That, um, I looked, I looked heavily on, uh, the property that was sold later on in the year. Uh, number one, ten twenty-five.
Okay.
And number four. I mean, I'm sorry, number one was, uh, ten forty-five, and then four, on the red were, uh, number three. As adjustments were pretty, were pretty low. But I noticed the sale price is a hundred and fifty-three thousand and nine thirty-four. That was pretty much one of the smaller properties than the other two properties, the eight sixty-eight. And one was, what, twenty-two years. I knew it was a certain property, and looking at the sale price, one sixty-eight. And the other property was eleven years, eight sixty-eight, looking sale price of one forty-six. So, those wasn't around with the sale, sale price too much. So, of course, they're newer and shouldn't use the comp. So, I focused on one and four, and I got the one thirty seven five. It was close in size, around same year. And even though, uh, they provide, um, I also noticed, um, they were in change. Our neighborhood is a bit speculative. And they could have been built a little bit bigger. And the kind of, looking at the sale price, of the much smaller. It could have been higher itself, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and a hundred and forty-six thousand. When the comp, when the, uh, property margin is ten forty-one, hundred and fifty square feet, that one forty-five. So, I thought one and four more than mine was the comp, where I used, uh, two, one thirty seven.
Okay, we hear from the assessor.
Eight oh nine Woodland Way. Your intersections here is gonna be Rockwell and Northwest Tenth Street. Uh, square footage of the property is one thousand forty-one square feet. We currently have it valued at a hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which would give us a price per square foot of a hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Uh, the last sale I could find was all the way back in two thousand and two. So, we don't really have a recent sale to go off of. The reason that you actually have comp five and six in there is because those were actually provided by Ryan LLC. So, that's why they were in there. Um, and I do understand your point, but we do make the adjustments for the age. Um, however, those are the only two of Ryan LLC's comps that we did use. So, their, uh, comp four and five are our comp five and six. Um, the other four are what we found, and were more comparable. Uh, so that six comp report supports a median value of a hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty-eight dollars, and a mean of a hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
What was the value last year?
The value last year was a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
So, it went up ten thousand. That was a real fail. I got that, I can, one and four, four, two.
Okay, I'm gonna close four, four, three, and open four twenty-six. Seventy-four twenty-nine Northwest Hundred and Thirty-Third, R two oh one, two twenty-one, two ten. You, your paperwork says three hundred and two thousand one hundred, Mr. Hayes, you staying with that?
Um, no, I don't, I'm going with R three, four, two.
Flat?
Right.
Okay.
All right, okay, I did. Forget my notes, it's all right. Sometimes I go back and change, and so I got to pick more. Uh. Yeah, and this one, I did the ones with the most adjustment. Um. One, two, three, and six. Uh, number four and five were considered, even though number six was small, too. Number four and five, I noticed the, uh, sale price, uh, was a little bit higher, or a little too high for the size. I always notice something was small, even though price per square foot, but when you look at a value sold in the middle of the year, not at the end of the year, because the market was, was expanding. Notice number, um, number four, wait, number three. Twenty-three sixty-seven, close to what, a hundred, a hundred and eighty-six square foot, smaller than some properties. Sold for three twenty-five. We have a property two hundred square foot, small. Twenty-one seventy-four, twenty-one ninety-three, sold in the middle of the year. They sold, and they're for high. So, when I see that, I automatically think that, like I said, that's a price point in the paper. So, any, any, I believe this is a certain neighborhood, it looks like it's on the air, I don't think those should be used, right? One, two, three, and six. Next, I got my three, four, two.
This is just south of Memorial, right? It's between Hundred Twenty-second and Memorial.
Uh, Rockwell and Memorial.
You know, this, you know, this, this sell price is a twenty fifty-nine, off. Three years lower, three years older, so two eight, that's more than mine. Because it's small. The other two, slightly larger than it, so well over here in the south.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Seventy-four twenty-nine Northwest Hundred Thirty-Third Street. As I just said, the intersection here is gonna be North Rockwell and West Memorial Road. Uh, the square footage of the property is two thousand five hundred and forty-one square feet. And we currently have it valued at three hundred and twenty thousand, which gives you a price per square foot of a hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Um, the twenty twenty-three value was three hundred and eight thousand. Uh, we did have a valid arms length transaction back in May of twenty-two for three hundred and one thousand. Uh, the six comp report supports a median value of three twenty-two, two fifty-five, and a mean of three twenty-five zero zero nine. We actually used four comps that were Ryan's and this, uh, in the original six comp report. So, the first comp, um, Ryan's first comp, I should say, is our comp three. Ryan's comp three is our comp six. Ryan comp five is our comp five, which is one that he's throwing out. And Ryan comp six is our comp four, which is also what he's throwing out. So, we use, that's why we use those. They, we use them because they were well supported of our value as well, and they were used from Ryan. Um, and then we just found the other two that were more comparable, and that's why we stuck with the three hundred and twenty thousand that we had them on for.
Okay, final word, Mr. Hayes.
Uh, once again, like I said, I don't, I will decree with these copies, just put together, um. Well, um, come to base on the square footage.
Okay.
I always decree.
Okay, I'm gonna close four twenty-six and open four twenty-seven. One six two oh four Cross Winds Trail. R one sixty-eight, six hundred and eighty, three oh five. Um, are you sticking with three hundred and sixty?
I think this is the one he said he didn't have anything on. I didn't even get it on it either.
The account number is wrong.
Yeah, I couldn't even find it on the website.
Yeah, that's what I was like.
The, the account number on this one is.
Mine is wrong now.
So, the account, the account number should be R two zero eight, seven, seven, one, seven, three, zero. Uh, we had to look it up by the address. That's how we found the account.
Yeah, I even tried to look it up by the address, I couldn't get it to come up.
Where do you have them on for?
Give me the, give me the account number, D R two zero eight.
Seven, seven, one, seven, three, zero. Uh, we have this one on for three hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
So, how do we handle it?
Yeah, that one. When I pull it up that way, I have that one.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna give us that? Your paperwork said three hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred.
Then you let him go first, 'cause I don't.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Let me look at it real quick. And what is that, what is the three seventy what?
Three seventy-eight is what the assessor says. Your paperwork is three sixty-three eight.
Look at our comp, look at their comps. Four, one, three, seventy-one. That was uncalled for. So, I agree with that, eh?
Okay.
All right, uh.
Yeah, three sixty-one.
I move on agenda item number six, B O E four twenty-seven, and we set the fair market value of this property at three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars per agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is four twenty-eight, which is, uh, seventy-three twenty-nine Northwest Hundred and Fifteenth. R one twenty-one nine seventy-one one seventy. Your paperwork says two hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred, Mr. Hayes, you sticking with that?
Where is this thing here? Hold on. I'm at two fifty-six. Five.
Okay.
Forgot why. This was. One, two, one. Okay, that's all. This was all.
Couldn't even find a picture, no.
Oh, there were only three comps on this one. Oh, I used one, three. Number two is too small. It's, uh, probably, what, fifty square foot smaller? So, by the concept of, uh, coming to scale, that's too small.
Well, it's only forty square feet smaller than comp one, though.
Yeah, but comp one is closer, it moved closer to range, so. And look at, and look at the sale price, fifty thousand dollar price, so.
You mean it's closer in proximity, or closer in what, what way?
Eighteen eighty-six was a little more than fourteen point, and the eighteen point, so that boy square foot, and now it's not close enough. And, and I looked at the sale price, two, looking at the sale price, the number two, two sixty. It's the smallest, it's sold for the highest. So, it's, I'm actually, that kind of tells. It's the smallest. It, it's four years older, just like number one. It's sold for sixty thousand dollars. So, it's, and number three is a mile away. So, it's really not a lot of good company, property, but I used number one and number three, and I got sixty-six five. All these properties are rather small, I can say nothing. One and two are very small, but I did use number two, 'cause sale price definitely upgraded.
Okay, we hear from the assessor.
All right. Uh, the seventy-three twenty-nine Northwest Hundred Fifteenth Street. Um, our major streets here is Northwest Hundred Twenty-second and North Rockwell Avenue. The square footage of the subject property is two thousand three hundred and ninety-six square feet, and we currently have it valued at two hundred and seventy-one thousand, which gives us a price per square foot of a hundred and thirteen dollars and eleven cents. We had a valid arms length transaction in April of twenty-two for two hundred and seventy thousand. So, we only have it up a thousand more from two years ago. Um, the comps that were provided by Ryan, if I ran those, um, and I believe we actually ran them in the report. Yeah, so we have two different reports, um, in there already. Uh, so the Ryan comp supported a median value of two seventy-two eight twenty-nine, and a mean value of two hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars. And then our three comps.
Is that reversed?
No, so, me, yeah, median is two, two twenty-one, sorry, two ninety-one five fifty-six, and the mean is two hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
The median was two ninety?
Yes.
Two ninety-one.
Two ninety-one five fifty-six.
Right, but that was your original comps, or his?
That was theirs. I flipped them. That's my bad.
Okay.
Yeah, their, their median is two ninety-one five fifty-six, and their mean is two eighty-nine twenty-eight. Our comps had a median value of two seventy-two eight twenty-nine, and a mean of two hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and fifteen. My apologies. And again, uh, we, we did have to go outside the neighborhood a little bit to find closer comparables. Uh, but, uh, either way, we run the comps using ours or theirs, it does support, um, the value that we currently have this at.
What was it, two thousand twenty-three?
Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
So, it went down from its sale price?
Yes.
And bounced back up?
Correct.
Thank you.
There weren't very many.
Well, twenty twenty-two was two hundred and eleven, so it went up considerably from twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three, it just got to the sale price.
Yeah, in twenty-two, well, the value in twenty-two is two eleven, but the sale happened in twenty-two, so it was, it was, um, raised in twenty-three.
Which is probably what drove it up to two fifty-nine, but just not as high as what the sale price was, probably because comps.
Correct.
Last word, Mr. Hayes.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't like the comp anyway, so, it's kind of a red heat indicator, okay?
Okay, so I'm gonna close that one and open B O E four twenty-nine, which is item eight on the agenda. Um, forty-two thirteen Northwest Sixty-first. R one forty-two, six ninety-two, three twenty-five. You sticking with a hundred and ninety-four thousand, Mr. Hayes?
Hold on, which one you want? Four twenty-nine?
Twenty-three twenty-five? Well, yeah. Our B O E four twenty-nine. Put the last.
I have a value of two forty-six five.
That's what the assessor's asking.
That's what the assessor's asking. You reading that?
No, I meant two forty-five. Two forty, two hundred and forty-five five twenty-five. Um, well, looking at all these comps, um, they all were three decent dogs. And then five, you know, there's number five was a little bit small, but it's probably kind of indicated that, that it's, you know, that it's respectable, and it was sold in the mid-year. Um, so I used all six, and I can use the mean of all six. This is one of the times where all the comps, or the lines, or the values, look for a piece looking between, I think the highest we had was one fifty-two, the lowest we had was the smallest, at one ninety-two. So, I considered going with five out. Um, but it was around, maybe you could price upside, so, looking at all five, I just took the mean of all five, came up with two forty-five.
Okay, we hear from the assessor.
Forty-two thirteen Northwest Sixty-first Street. Your intersection here is gonna be Northwest Sixty-third and North Meridian. Uh, the square footage is one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five square feet, and we currently have it valued at two hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred, which would give you a price per square foot of a hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. The twenty-three value was two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred. We did have a valid arms length transaction in March of twenty-two for two hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, our six comp report supports a median of two forty-six, three fifty-two, and a mean of two hundred and forty thousand five thirty-four. If we run the comps that were provided by Ryan, and there are only four of those, and it gives us a median of two fifty-four, six eighty-nine, and a mean of two forty-eight, eight seventy-four. And especially, like, in this case, um, what was already mentioned by Mr. Hayes, when we have six really good comps, um, we would rather use the median in this case, because you do have a range of sales here. Um, if you go back to, or go to the bottom of the comps. Uh, so, you have a, you have a me, meaning? If you have, you have a minimum sale of two hundred and five thousand five seventy-seven, and a sale that was two hundred and sixty-four thousand seven oh four, he's right in the middle, uh, in that. And that's, that's why we left him where he's at, because the, these comps support it, his comps support a higher value. And that's, that's why we left him where he's at, because the, these comps supported, his comps support a higher value. So there's no reason for us to change.
Now, he first said he took the mean of all six, then I heard five. So how are you getting two fifty-four and two forty-eight, and he's saying two forty?
Those are Ryan's comps. If we run their four comps that they provided, that's the two fifty-four, six eighty-nine.
So he, well, is the mean of all six of them two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred?
Of our comps, yes.
Yeah, the mean, the mean of his comps are two hundred.
Forty.
Yeah.
Okay.
The mean of our comps is two forty, five thirty-four.
Okay.
But you didn't throw out comp five because it was so much smaller?
Well, it still within, it's about four hundred square feet, so still, and the, and the price indicates. Was kind of an indicator that, that it was the value of correct, it wasn't upgraded anything, so.
Do you own about thirty square feet on the other one, or forty square feet on the other one, but it's four hundred, okay, never mind. I get what, so you take, you took the assessor's mean, I, that's, that's my bad, I proposed with you.
It's, it's within, it's within the, the threshold.
Yeah.
And the price indicates that, that you got.
Okay.
The comps, the, the comps they provided, and you saw two.
I got it. Okay, I'm gonna close four twenty-nine and open four thirty, which is item nine on the agenda. One six two, one two, Old Oak Drive. R two oh five, oh one, one, three, eight, zero, are you sticking with four hundred, five thousand, nine hundred, Mr. Hayes?
I know, I'm at four seventeen. On this one, um, with most of these values. For most of these properties, um, what are other two? There were two that were kind of small. Uh, number four and number six. Um, I weighed heavily on number uh, five sale price. From five, um. Sale price pretty much same time, twenty-eight, twenty-five. So fifty-six square foot smaller, if that's good. Uh, some properties average plus. Uh, land lot larger, so four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So by right of the, uh. Um, um. I'm gonna look at the price. Trying to see how I got there. Are we on thirteen eighty?
Yes. Is that, is that price of comp five?
Yeah, it is.
I'm sorry, I agree with this one.
Okay.
I wanna change, sorry about that. I just wrote to practice the computer.
Alright. On agenda item number nine, B O E four thirty, move set, mark fair market value of the property at four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars per agreement.
A second?
All in favor?
Alright.
Fine.
Okay, we'll go to B O E four thirty-one. Three oh one Northwest Hundred and Fifty-fourth Street. R two eleven, eighty-six, ten eighty. You sticking with five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred, Mr. Hayes?
I'm at five oh three, five hundred.
Okay.
Um, I used one, four, five, number six was de- definitely, uh. Uh, and I ride thirty-three, ninety. Um. Number. Two and three. Um, hold on. Well, no, I, I used one, four, five, and the average of two and three. Yeah. I, because number two and three were three and five, yeah. Five thirty-nine, two fifty-six nine. And three fifty-five and five forty-four, five, I took those two averages, that they were the same. And I used one, four, five, the average of two and three, which was five forty, round, I got five oh three. Sorry, you do that, I'll, five, I'm gonna use number six.
Okay. We hear from the assessor.
Three oh one Northwest Hundred and Fifty-fourth Street, your intersection here is gonna be Northwest Hundred Fiftieth Street and North Santa Fe Avenue. Square footage is two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four square feet. And we currently have a value of five sixteen, five hundred, which gives you a price per square foot of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. The twenty-three value was five hundred and twelve thousand, even. We did have a valid arms link transaction in May of twenty-two for four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. All six of the comps that are, that we supplied were actually all of Ryan's comps. So we agreed that these were the best uh to, the best comps to use.
Including comp six?
Yes, all six of these comps were Ryan's. Uh, six, the six comp report supports a median of five twenty-one, five oh four, and a mean of five fifteen, five oh four.
Is this the Traditions Neighborhood? And that's next to Brenton Hills, I think.
The lake, so, yeah. And that's all I have on this one.
Last word, Mr. Hayes.
Uh, like I said, I know Ryan's buy is complex, uh, thirty-four hundred square feet, a little, a little bit too large.
Close to four thirty-one and open up four thirty-two, which is item eleven on the agenda. Four, three, two. Sixty-four, thirteen Northwest Hundred and Fifty-nine. Two oh, uh, two one oh, sixty-four, ten forty. Are you sticking with three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, Mr. Hayes?
I'm going to that one. What was the value on them?
But your paperwork says three hundred and twenty-eight, six. The assessors said three hundred and forty-eight.
Uh, two, one, zero. Zero, four, zero. Okay, wait. Three. Seven, four. My number is different than what I'm looking at now, sorry, hold on a second.
What, the ten forty or the valuation?
Why, R two, one, zero, six, four?
Ten forty.
Did I need to take these numbers? Computer's trying to read them now, can't do that. I'm at three forty-two. Um.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I agree with this.
Okay. I'm gonna take a margin.
Still at three forty-eight.
Yes, okay.
Alright, agenda item eleven, B O E four thirty-two, move set the fair market value of the property per agreement at three forty, three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, we go to B O E, item twelve on the agenda, which is B O E four thirty-three. Forty-two oh one Northwest Forty-third, R fourteen fifty-three, fifty-two, nine twenty-five. You sticking with a hundred and sixty-five thousand, Mr. Hayes?
One eighty-seven, five.
Okay.
Based off one, two, three. Um, number four. Numbers, number four and five, the sale price. My number four is too small, it's eleven, it's seven comma five hundred square foot. We're running fifteen hundred square foot, very short, so it shouldn't literally one-third that's in the house. Um, number six. Um, I didn't really care for the sale price, two oh one, fourteen thirty-two. It was close. Um, it's a lot newer, fifteen years younger. Uh, once again, I always notice, you know, the uh, the adjustment, almost seventeen percent. Um. When you're going from a property that's newer. I noticed it, it, you got it out, written, the deal is. The thing is, it's a little bit off, I think. One, one eight off, I think I noticed, from up to down. Um, differential. Uh, and analysts set that algorithm, so I don't really, how you guys set your algorithm. On a property that's newer compared to one of our properties, older and vice versa. I just noticed that the, and I know it should, it should range sometimes from the neighborhood. But it should be kind of, kind of steady, no matter the size or the neighborhood. Because of, we're dealing with uh more or less adjustments for age. So it's not like a time adjustment. You know, our eight uh, square foot is simple eight. So eight is, you know, age attrition is, is a factor, but I just don't really, you got it, algorithm, so I didn't use that. But um. And number six is, like I said, once again, uh, smaller two, so number four, number six are small. And the number four, I didn't agree, and the mean number five, I didn't agree with the adjustment, I was one, two, and three, I got one eighty-seven, five.
Mr. Hayes, did you use the, the adjusted value at the bottom of the comps? Because I get one ninety-seven, nine, when I average those three comps.
Looking at it now. Can't change, hold on, I'm gonna. No, sorry, I used one, two, and five, why didn't you? Hold on for the change. Two, two. Oh, yeah, I didn't use number five, cuz it was adjusted to. I used one, two, and five, I didn't use one, three, sorry. I need to use number three.
There's some figures checking out on one, two, and five.
Yeah, I also noticed that the subject property was fair.
So why didn't you use comp three?
Uh, the sale price.
Sale price?
You might guess.
I didn't like the adjustment. Uh, it was two hundred square foot and an average. And it should have been adjusted, it shouldn't have been adjusted the way it should have been, should have been adjusted lower, for the average, yeah, I didn't like that. So the subject property is fair, why are you adjusting higher? When the comparisons, it, it's two hundred square foot smaller. But it's adjusted twenty thousand in the sale price, it adjusted twenty thousand from a property that averaged the fair. Definitely, I don't believe that's correct. I don't think they adjusted it, the um, the concept of the condition, the effective range.
Well, so what is the condition of fire?
Five?
Number four.
Three, you started by three.
Three is average, but we adjusted down. The reason that the adjustment at the very end is a positive one. Is because the subject has an outbuilding, and none of the other comps do. So it's actually adding three point one four percent. I mean, and adding value to get it like the subject on those particular ones.
But you did the same thing on comps one, two, and five as well, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's hear from the assessor.
Well, I didn't notice that, yeah. Okay, so look at, look at the sale price of number five.
Five?
Little three, it's average, well, number four.
Are we looking at five or three?
No, three, why don't we get four? Is it a change in number four?
You didn't use four, right?
We are just giving examples.
Okay.
Five, right? It is just the two hundred and thirty-four thousand. But why is that even a comp? And it's a name, it's, it's fair. Number six, the one seventy-five, so it's April, it's adjusted to two twelve. It's fair. Why is it adjusted higher?
Your, your adjustment per square footage. That's why. It, I mean, on four and six, it's adjusting positively because it is smaller. So it's an eighteen point nine seven percent adjustment, just on square footage alone. Because it's smaller to make it like the subject property. On top of that, you have the outbuilding. That's another positive one. Attached, uh, yeah, attached garage, that's another positive adjustment. A land size is another positive adjustment. Your only negative adjustment on comp four is the age, because it is slightly younger. Everything else is a positive number, which is why you get an increase in the adjustment.
My point is, the adjustment is very high for properties around fifteen hundred square foot, so it's very high. Because of the condition and the fact, that's why they're not comps. They're not come.
That's your opinion?
We're talking five?
How, how many Ryan, are we, to you yet?
Yeah, let's hear the assessor, I'd like to hear the assessor's voice, sir.
Okay, forty-two oh one Northwest Forty-third Street, major streets here, Northwest Thirty-ninth and North Meridian Avenue. Square footage of the subject property is one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three square feet. We currently have it valued at two hundred and two thousand, which gives us a price per square foot of a hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. The value in twenty-three was a hundred and ninety-three thousand. The last valid arms link transaction was all the way back in two thousand nine for a hundred and seventeen thousand. Uh, six comp report supports a median of two hundred and five thousand, nineteen dollars. And a mean of two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We did use two of Ryan's comps in that report. Ryan's comp two is our comp one. And Ryan's comp three is our comp two. And that was all we used out of Ryan's in our original report. And again, um, our median and our mean are both higher than actually what we have it valued at.
What was the median again?
Yeah, the median is two hundred and five thousand, nineteen dollars.
So, Mr. Hayes finally did or did not use comp five?
He did, he used one, two, and five, and not sure why he didn't use three. Oh, wait, he said because of the adjustments, that's why, on number three.
Yeah.
Um, but, but again, when we make, when we pick our comps. We are, we are going with, we try to get as close as we can on square footage and age and land size, we do, we do try to. But there's, there's not. There's very, very rare occasions where you're gonna have same plot of land, same, same square footage, same age, it's very hard for that. So that's why we have the adjustments that we have for these. If you agree with them or disagree with them, that's an opinion um on that. Uh, but all of these are across the board the same, we don't change it. Um, so that's, that's why we make those adjustments, to make it like the subject. That's why those comps are being negatively and positively changed to make it like the subject.
The comps four and six are close to five hundred square feet smaller, though.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Uh, but we are making an adjustment for that. Um.
Boom.
Do I, do I think it was the best comps? I don't know, um, cuz I didn't do this one. Um, but I can't rerun new comps. Uh, if I be able to find new ones, I don't know. Um, but we did use their, two of their comps, and this is what we have.
Reason why you did, cuz they did provide six comps, I showed two of them, we're more than a half a mile away, but is there a reason why you couldn't, didn't use four?
There were more adjustments.
More adjustments.
Mm-hmm.
That, that percentage would be higher, and you would see a higher dollar amount at the bottom.
This seems like a neighborhood, it's all over the place.
It is. Okay.
It is.
So when you have neighborhoods all over the place, from, from an appraisal concept, you actually should shrink your comp number. Because you don't have a lot out there, cuz you're jumping on any day, day, it's the king of the.
No, all over the place doesn't mean there's nothing that's sold, it just means that there's a variation in the style and age of the houses. And that's an older product, that is, that effect, Bethany?
Um, no, it's a Meridian.
Move.
Uh. It's right by Lake Captain Parkway there, so.
Where was that cross street on?
Uh, this one, uh, Northwest Thirty-Ninth and Meridian.
Okay, yeah, I know where. Okay, yeah, I know where that is.
Okay, let me get, let me set Thirty Ninth and Meridian.
It's right off of the highway.
Yeah, yeah.
Not far from, yeah, Lake Captain Parkway where you exit to get onto Thirty Ninth Street.
It's just, what's that, north of Will Rogers Park.
Oh, okay, 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 oh, that neighborhood is all over the place, yeah, yeah, yeah. And some of the houses are very well kept and some are fitted out, yes, okay, the final word, Mister Hayes.
Nothing further.
Okay, we're gonna close four thirty three and and go to item thirteen on the agenda, which is B O E four thirty four. R fourteen sixty thirty two, two hundred and twenty five, are you sticking with a hundred and eighty eight thousand four hundred, Mister Hayes?
The last four is what?
Twenty two, twenty five.
You, two eighty six five hundred, two seventy one.
Okay.
Seven probably twenty five sixty. Um. Number, number um. Four and five.
I don't know what that last thing was you said, and this is B O E four thirty four and the last four are twenty two, twenty five.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And the value is two eighty six five hundred.
Oh, yes, okay, that's reading, that's correct.
Two seventy one.
Yes, sorry.
Do you say you based that off of four and five?
No, I bet, no, I based it off one, two, and three, I mean, four and five was too too small. Uh and yeah, I looked at the uh. The uh. The uh um. The five, and I did, I also looked at the uh.
I'm sorry, you said which one, did you say one of them was too small?
It's the four and five, because he only used one, two, and three.
Five hundred square foot. Um, one, two, and three.
But comp two is smaller than comp four.
Doesn't sell, his price is lower.
Um, I didn't use number four. Cause I I didn't like the sale price, look at number three, twenty six thirty seven, so two fifty two. Number four, four hundred square foot is small. Right, laying a little bit larger, but same, pretty much same size as number three.
But comp two is also four hundred and something square feet smaller.
Look at the price it sold for.
So it's about the same price.
That's why, those are what I call the price point indicator, you just made my point on that, that's why we need the difference in size and price. One sold for two hundred, one sold for two sixty five, fifty five thousand dollar difference. Okay, so twenty two fifty three. Hope you have it at close to the end of the year. And it was out of the neighborhood. But, I mean, once again, we have a difference in in price, a lot of these subject properties, and I some of these uh adjustments a little bit. Um kind of high strung for me, thirty thousand dollars, um it had the highest adjustment. Number two adjusted higher too, but it sold for more, it was maybe an outlier, but I also used it because it was the only one that had the same quality grade at fair. So that's, I can't open my two seventy one.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Five zero one six Northwest Twenty Sixth Street, your intersection here is gonna be Northwest Twenty Third and MacArthur. Square footage on the property is two thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. We do currently have it valued at two hundred eighty six thousand five hundred, which gives you a price per square foot of a hundred and eleven dollars and ninety one cents. The twenty three value was two hundred and sixty four thousand five hundred. And the last sale that I could find that was valid was back in two thousand three. The six comp report supports a median of two hundred and eighty eight thousand three seventy five and a mean of two hundred eighty five thousand three twenty one. And we did not use any of the comps that were provided because there were a lot more adjustments that had to be made on all of them. So we used the best six based on adjustments, square footage, all of all of that that is on there and location. And that's why we stuck with it because our mean and median, or our mean is slightly lower, but our median is a little bit higher. So we felt like the two eighty six five hundred is more than fair. And that's all I have on this one.
Last word, Mister Hayes.
Nothing further.
Okay, gonna close, uh uh thirteen on the agenda, go to fourteen on the agenda, B O E four thirty five. Seventy four hundred Northwest Eighteenth. R seventeen thirty nine twelve seven twenty, are you sticking with a hundred and forty thousand seven hundred, Mister Hayes?
One seventy eight five. Uh most of the properties you were in line, I didn't like um. The um. Sale price of number uh. Five, I used one, two, three, four, and six, number five was fair property. And I didn't, uh, because the sale price, one ninety one, it's one of the times when it wasn't in line with all the rest when it comes to price per square foot being at fair. Um, look at number two, thirteen seventy nine, so one seventy five. So even though the price was, I mean, the script was lower, it sold for a little bit higher than the other part. So it adjusted being at fair, I didn't like that, so.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Seventy four hundred Northwest Eighteenth Street, your intersection here is gonna be Northwest Sixteenth and North Rockwell. Square footage is one thousand six hundred forty seven square feet. The twenty four value is one hundred ninety thousand. Which gives you a price per square foot of a hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty six cents. The twenty three value was a hundred and seventy five thousand. And the last valid arms link transaction on this one was all the way back in the year two thousand. The six comp report supports a median of a hundred ninety two thousand two eighty four and a mean of a hundred eighty three thousand two forty eight. Uh, the reason we left it on at that one, the median on this one. And two, and this, where we have it valued at is in the range here, your range is a hundred and fifty thousand five ninety six up to two hundred and seven thousand five fifty three. And we did use two of Ryan's comps, and it's actually one that he threw out. Ryan's comp two is our comp five and Ryan's comp four is our comp six. All the other ones were invalid, invalid for different reasons. So uh that's the reason we stuck with that is because we're using the median and it's actually a little bit higher than what we had it all for. That's why we left it.
Last word, Mister Hayes.
Uh, nothing further.
Okay, we're gonna close B O E four thirty five, we have two items left. Uh, let's see. Okay, B O E number four twenty seven, three twenty north, no?
Four thirty seven.
Four thirty seven, B O uh, three twenty Northwest Hundred Eighteenth. R thirteen oh seven sixty eight three ten, are you gonna stick with seventy five thousand seven hundred, Mister Hayes?
Of course, yeah. Uh, I meant one twenty nine five, six, seven, two, three, six, I didn't use number one. Cause if you can tell, it is horrible, a hundred and eighty four thousand. Um, it adjusted up to one ninety two, nine square foot log, it was four years older, it adjusted. Um, eight thousand, so I'll be at one twenty nine five.
Okay, we'll hear from the assist.
Three twenty Northwest Hundred Eighteenth Street, your intersection's here is gonna be Northwest Hundred Twenty Second and Northwestern Avenue. Square footage is one thousand thirty one square feet. We have it currently valued at a hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred. Which which gives us a price per square foot of a hundred and twenty eight dollars and fifty one cents. The twenty three value was a hundred and twenty four thousand. Uh, this one is, we had a multi-property purchase back in December of eighteen. But other than that, the last recent sale was all the way in nineteen eighty eight. Um, so there's not, and I didn't even think the sell price was, I didn't write it down. The six comp report supports a median of a hundred twenty eight thousand three eighty six and a mean of a hundred and thirty nine thousand eight eighty eight. We did use two of Ryan's comps, so Ryan's comps, comp five is our comp two. And Ryan's comp two is our comp six. Uh again, we, we left it there, one, because you have the the mean and median being fairly close, mean is higher. Median is slightly lower, but your range of sales here is kind of all over the place. Hundred and twelve thousand is your lowest and a hundred and ninety two is your highest. So we felt like we have this valued uh correctly based on it already being in the middle of of where, and it's probably more on the lower end. Um, of the minimum and the maximum sale in this neighborhood, so that's why we left it.
What was the age of the house?
Uh, the subject is forty one years old.
Okay, cause they're putting new stuff all around that area.
Yep, your your average, um, I haven't been saying this one because it hasn't been brought up, but the average age of the comps, so if you take off six, um, is forty four years old.
Yeah.
So we we try to stay in that ballpark, I mean, there are some that are, they're they're slightly older, but they're not anything like brand new, I guess I should say.
Right. Yeah, but they're running some fourplexes or something, just hugging western right there, just south, like between a hundred fifteenth, a hundred nineteenth, that you saying though? I mean, it's a ton of them, that's, so it's mixed, we're being interested, okay, final word for you, Mister Hayes.
Like I said, I didn't use number one, you know, this is the sale price, a hundred eighty four thousand.
Yeah.
The sale price ranges from a hundred, what, a hundred and ten to one eighty four. Look at the difference, the prop, the property that's largest sold two months later is let no step at fair, one year newer than the other comparisons on one eighty four, so it's heavy upgrade, so that's why we go.
Okay, gonna close um four thirty seven, final item for us today, Mister Hayes, is gonna be. Uh, item seventeen, which is B O E number four thirty eight, eight forty nine Northwest Hundred and Fourth. R thirteen oh eight forty seven, seven sixty seven, are you sticking with a hundred and twenty five thousand four hundred?
Uh, I don't know, hold up. No, I meant one fifty three five, seven sixty seven, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, one fifty three five.
Okay.
That fifty three?
Yeah, one five three, five hundred.
Six five, um, once again, I used all the four, um.
All except number four?
Yes, number four is the model, eleven fifty eight, and it sold for the highest. So, and so it's, so that's pretty, pretty, pretty much an indicator, it's seventy two thousand dollars higher than the property twelve twenty eight. Uh, it only adjusted twenty four thousand, I really don't understand what you guys are adjusting, hold on, I'm gonna do this just.
I thought you were gonna say size, but you're, but you're not, it's price, this hidden, you always know that, huh?
So so, but when the, so when the size, it could make my point even more, when you have a property that's four hundred square foot smaller, what, four twenty eight to be exact.
Okay.
Right, and look at the year, thirty three years newer, and that's why I'll punch two of two, so not only is that, but probably. You also look at, remember, we're going back, so you're looking at the value, meaning there's there's another market value. Uh, two hundred and two value for eleven hundred fifty square foot, when you compare it to a problem fifteen eighty six. So it's sold for the highest, it's sold higher than the median, cause it's newer for one, right? So that means it, it's a newer version of a property, so it's not a comp, shouldn't be used as a comp. You have another property, eighty six square foot smaller, twenty two years ago, sold and made over two hundred, so I do that one, I use.
I wanna ask the assessor, is it newer because of remodel or is it just an outlier in this neighborhood, a newer home?
So based on like that effective age, I'm gonna agree this is probably remodeled.
Yeah.
Because that age is significantly lower.
Exactly.
That's the subject property, right?
Uh, comp four?
Well, comp four is probably remodeled.
Yeah, and that's, that's gonna be on the opposite side, but on the same street.
What's the address?
Uh, that one's eight two four Northwest Hundred Fourth.
No, that's still on the uh east side of western.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it'll, it'll still be on the same street.
Oh, sorry.
It's just on the opposite side of the street, yeah.
And then some of those.
Yeah.
I I from an, from an appraisal standpoint, I I don't think it's fair to other properties, when you adjust the property thirty years or a remodel. Especially when you, when you're only doing it off a few digital pictures, unless you can go in and evaluate a property and actually truly inspect it digitally. I don't think you should be changing those.
Now, Mister Hayes, you you do know that the assessor is obligated once every four years to assess, to physically walk a property. So they, the hit the county in quadrants, and this year is a quadrant being hit where they're actually foot walking, touching, looking at. So you, don't make, like, hold up, you can't make.
So we, at Fraser, we did a Fraser, um, myself, at a county. Um, we, we assessed them also, so we assessed them early and we walked by. We don't go, if you're saying each appraisal inside each one, or maybe none of them, so your property, your county is that small, you got enough appraisal, for each appraisal.
No, actually, we have a very large county, but you make assumptions that nobody has been to the property, and that's, I'm, I'm addressing.
Inside of the property.
Okay, now you wanna get technical as to how they do their inspections.
So because of the remodel, you go, you drive by the property, you stop.
What was the year of the remodel on this one?
Yeah, you, you look, you measure the outside, and you know, man, most of the time, they know about the remodel because people go to Home Depot or they report. And they get a, a uh, a, a, a uh, a permit, other than they, they don't really know what's going on inside the property, right? Because I've worked.
In twenty, twenty three.
You just know they got enough appraisal to walk inside every property you.
Okay, so Mister Hayes, hold up, stop, stop.
I, I have a quick question, can we just confirm, is comp five a July twenty twenty one comp?
Yes, and the reason it was used is because Ryan sent it.
Okay.
I don't agree on that.
And um.
So to answer what you're. What you're talking about, is anytime a property sells, we have a team who looks at those cells to validate those cells or invalidate those cells. And this particular, I I'm talking. In this particular case, the remodel that we found was based on the N L S listing. So yes, there are times where if we notice and when we're walking it. If we're walking it and that door is open and it is being currently remodeled, we do go in them. If it is not to where we can go in them and it is up for sale, we have a team who validates those cells. And will put on a remodel, and that is what happened on that property. So whatever your spiel was all about, it's wrong.
Okay, we're kinda off topic here, we're, we're just talking about process and let's just focus on the house and.
But that is, it comes up as to whether we can use this one as a comp, right?
Yeah, I mean.
That that would be our decision, whether we say it's, it's valid or not, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, I mean, the issue's gonna be the age, and I see that. Yeah, I mean, the, the, I mean, the issue's gonna be the age and I see that. And my point of view, we do make the adjustment for that. So, but I, I do see his point, but I'm not gonna disagree, I, I completely disagree with what he's saying on how we do our remodel.
Okay, so on this one, the assessor's at one sixty one five and Mister Hayes is at one fifty three five.
I don't, not sure if we heard the assessor's readout on this one, so I'd like to confirm what the, um, median was.
Yep. Eight forty nine Northwest one hundred and fourth street, major streets, uh, or your intersections here, I should say, uh, West Hefner Road and Northwestern. Square footage, one thousand five hundred and eighty six square feet. Twenty twenty four value is a hundred and sixty one thousand five hundred. And a price per square foot of a hundred and one dollars and eighty three cents. The twenty three value was a hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred. We did have a multi-property purchase back in eighteen, um, but the last arms league transaction was back in nineteen ninety eight. The six comp report we ran supports a median of a hundred and fifty four thousand seven thirteen. And a mean of a hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and eight. We did use three of Ryan's comps. Ryan's comp five is our comp three. Their comp one is our comp six. And our comp three is our comp five, which is that twenty one cell that you asked about. And I did wanna point out, even what you're asking for, it's not gonna lower the taxes. The taxes are significantly lower, so.
And is there a reason that you use the median over the mean on this one? I'm sorry, the mean over the median on this one? Cause it's a pretty significant difference, ten thousand.
Yeah, because of the range of the cells in the area. Your range here, your lowest is a hundred and thirty nine thousand eight seventy two and then the max sell is two sixteen, four twenty two. So it falls in that range and that's why we stuck with the, the mean on this one.
Okay, final word for you, Mister Hayes.
Um, okay, so there's just. You know, in, in respect to the, the remodel, I'm sorry, you don't adjust the property thirty two years. Because I don't know how old of that property is, but the difference in value. It's the concept of understanding that the year of the property built should always be. In, 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 in a concept. And yet, if you walk into a property that is heavily upgraded, I just don't believe that adjusting the property at any year. Is correct because of the fact that it's being compared to other comps. That's the unfair practice of critical standards that should not be, uh, done. Because it affects the other values. You know, of course, you're given an adjustment, you know, an adjustment that means years. If, if, if that property is in line with the other property, I just don't do that fair. I mean, that's why we do these here, because a computer does the value from now with us. So we do more than we have with, that's why we have these here, so I, I understand. Uh, the concept of adjustment, but I don't think it's.
Okay, alright, so this is gonna do us, uh, for you, Mister Hayes, so it's, I think we've now done all of your properties. And I'm assuming we'll probably see you next year and since you're familiar with how we work now. Um, you guys. Okay, and, um. So we, we'll meet on Friday and set these values and you'll get a notice from us. Okay, so, um, pleasure working with you, Mister Hayes, and we'll see you next year. Alright, bye bye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, just, I know where I'm way far ahead of myself, but we have, um. A tax roll and an excise meeting on Monday the seventeenth. So are we gonna have any, are we gonna have this on Monday? We haven't gotten that far out, right, of June?
Is that the third?
It's the third Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so what?
I think we have six, five, five and six general commercials.
Okay.
Yes, off the top of my head, I don't, I knew last week.
Okay, well, we got six for tomorrow.
We got six commercial tomorrow and six commercial, right, or a commercial, aren't they?
If you're finished, I'll, but. I guess we'll see you guys next year. Thanks so much. Okay, turn on mic, I say hey.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
A second.
All a favor?
Hi.